I call this meeting ordered. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Christian.
Thank you. Please join me in the Lord's Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I recite it.
Who are we, amen? Call upon thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as it is in the Word of the Lord. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And believe us, my brethren, temptation will deliver us to the kingdom.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public questions?
Yes.
Do you have five minutes to read them? Anything about the...
I'll do my best.
All right, thank you.
The first one is from John Roach. Council will soon start its annual budget workshops, and I'd like to make a point. Traditionally, council has given the private tax-exempt organization GoR $2,000 a year of health fund in the parking park. A few years ago, council was asked by their director for additional funding because they were having financial problems. Council agreed to help them with another $4,000 of our tax dollars for a total of $6,000. Then last year, the council gave them the same amount. This year, I'm asking that you give them only the original amount of $2,000. If we are cutting back on city services, cutting back on purchases, and operating with a hiring freeze, I see no reason to help a private, tax-exempt organization with its budget when taxpayers in Batavia are having problems with their own. I ask that the $2,000, if given at all, be done with the understanding that it will be paid quarterly, and that if the city encounters additional financial problems, the gift can be discontinued. Further, if GoR does not run the in-person picnic in the park, the $2,000 is returned to the city taxpayers. Thank you, John Roach. I have two more.
Go ahead.
This is from Timothy Doosen. First, with COVID-19 still around, the city of Batavia should think twice about playing baseball at the Dwyer Stadium this year. I have been attending games since I was born and would love to see baseball back at Dwyer as I have been telling the board members of BRRC for years to get rid of the NYPD League as they do not want this team in the league like 10 years ago. Go to the Collegiate Baseball League, where many of the old NYPD teams play. The PGCBF has 14 teams as of 2020 with nine teams, former members. I'm hoping that this does go through, and the Muck Dogs can play in this league as the team name "Muck Dogs" belongs to the BRRC, not the New York Pen League. They only stole the franchise from the Red Wings and the city of Batavia. Yes, I said "stole" because there is $3 million fee for a team, and this should be paid to the city of Batavia and the Rochester Red Wings. This will not happen as the NYPD League was folded by the MLB owners who controlled minor league baseball after buying the rights in 1994, when the big boys went on strike. This is when the NYPD League began to break apart with Geneva, Newark, Little Falls, Watertown, Jamestown, Oneonta, Utica, Elmira, and Glen Falls being moved to other larger cities. When the NYPD League announced they were folding last year, this was when they broke the lease on the stadium and should have been locked out. Just like any other business, and the city of Batavia should get a backbone and take Major League Baseball and Minor League Baseball to court. And the New York State Attorney General should back this on antitrust laws. They control what happens to the cities. If every minor league city and team in America would get together and boycott the 2021 Minor League season, this would send a message to the lawmakers in Washington, DC. If the majors can boycott, why not the minor league teams? Just my thoughts as a 50-plus-year fan and my grandmother, one of the original fans in 1939 at opening day. Who cares what league plays as long as there is baseball at Dwyer Stadium? And the last one is from Bill Hayes. My name is Bill Hayes, and I reside now for the last 30 years at 22 Meadow Crest Drive in the city of Batavia. I did two terms on the zoning board of appeals. I was on the task force for locating a new city hall in Batavia with the city manager at the time, Jason Molino. I am presently a member of the stakeholders group for the betterment of the community with the help of Batavia City Police. I have been a Batavia Lion for 30 years and large for the last 20. I am an avid supporter of almost anything in this city to make it a better place to live for everyone. I have been a strong supporter of baseball in this city from T-ball to Coach Pitch to Little League, right up to semi-pro with the Clippers and Muck Dogs alike. The city needs a baseball team here. I am sure Ben Hayes and the new Pen League did not want to leave here. And for Mr. Hayes, no relation to me, to refer Robbie and Nellie Nichols to us was huge for this community. Collegiate baseball is very exciting to watch and to dream to be a part of. When I say "dream," I think of all youth playing baseball around this stadium in this county and surrounding counties. It's the next step from high school and attainable by any one of our high school players. City, let's help them keep dreaming by coming to a game May on one of the sponsorship I offer. Let's not forget about all the elderly and retired people in this community. They also love baseball and going to the games in the summer. They have paid their dues in the past with past baseball teams with their continued support. I know I'm not alone as a business owner of Batavia when I say I will support this team if they're allowed to come to town. I reviewed the terms of the lease, and for one year, the city gets $1 per year? Not really. Just look at the cost, pay utilities, and keep our beautiful stadium in tip-top shape for baseball. We do not have to pay city employees to do this work in the way Robbie and Nellie Nichols want it for play. Last but not least, I see so much promise in the events and celebrities that the Nichols family will bring to this city during this short baseball season. I feel the fan base will increase with this also. As owner of Turnbull Heating and Air Conditioning, I pledge to support this team for this community and my seven grandsons, now seven years old and younger. Please vote yes for baseball in Batavia. P.S. In the past, we were not allowed to use the facilities for our community use. The Nichols family will take care of the field and allow community groups, Little League teams, and high school teams use and play in this stadium. Again, a dream come true for those kids who have been playing baseball from T-ball league on to high school. Thank you.
Any comments?
George, I have a question. The court case that the panel mentioned, is there not really anything we could pursue?
Not anything reasonable that we could pursue. I think there's going to be a lot of analysis of antitrust claims against minor league baseball for what's happened here. But we talked at times about the cost of various litigation matters. I think this would pale in comparison to other matters. Quite frankly, to get into antitrust litigation with minor league baseball with New York City lawyers, times multiple lawyers, even if there's a viable claim that could be pursued, the cost associated with trying to pursue that to a conclusion would be significant. So we haven't specifically analyzed it, but antitrust litigation is a very expensive...
We did at least consider that. I mean, we looked into our options at that point. Did we have...
Well, I mean, we didn't specifically look at antitrust litigation. We looked at the question of whether or not there's going to be any viable entity around after Pen League, New York State Pen League Inc. ceases to operate. And quite frankly, there's probably not going to be enough there to chase.
I just had to ask that. Couldn't be answered because you were here, and he made that case, so I thought I would at least ask for it. So that now is our responsibility. It's not really feasible at this time to build that route.
Not by community, but community basis. I wouldn't think so.
Right. Okay, anyone else?
In reference to GoR, which I feel we have to defend, when you cut GoR, you don't just cut at art gatherings. You cut the Genesee Symphony Orchestra, the Batavia Cubs, Batavia players, youth programs for children, and there's summer programs that they do when the kids are out of school. Paying in the park is their major fundraiser. That's why they ask for money for it, and they are definitely not profit with every meaning of the word.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Was there any budget request from GoR this year yet?
Yes.
Yes.
$6,000.
And that will be addressed during the budget process?
Yes.
So that will come up during the budget process. We can decide on that.
Right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, communications?
I have nothing to say.
Next city council conference meeting will be held on Monday, January 25, 2021, 7:00 PM in the City Hall Council Boardroom. Mr. Cross, you have a vote in the office to take. How do we want to work this with COVID guidelines? Oh, you already did this?
We did do it in the office last week. So we have all that.
So this would be more ceremonial thing? How do you want to handle it? Do you want to disposs it? You're good? I didn't know if you had family here or you wanted to...
That's right.
Main Street Anchor Grant.
Yep. Thank you, Council President. The downtown Batavia Business Improvement District is here this evening with representatives, and they are looking to apply for a Main Street Anchor Grant for Six Elva Place, which is currently the movie theater here at City Center. My understanding of the grant that it will utilize funding for facade and interior improvements. Now, you saw another grant application for this exact same program come to you at the December meeting. And before I ask Bath to come up and speak, I wanted to address and say there's no reason our city can't support both of these projects. One of the projects is the BDC is putting in for the Performing Arts Theater here at City Center, and the other is for the other theaters. So would that Bath, if you have anything to add about the grant application?
Sure. I thought maybe I would just go into detail on some of the council's plans. Do you want me to...
Yeah, if you do, then you can turn off your mask. I can take it off, or... You can take it off to talk. Okay.
Here, we have the boardroom. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the proposed plan is essentially taking what is the outdated movie theater, Six Elva Place, and converting it into a multi-functioning event space, if you will. Still housing a cinema, additional staging areas for other forms of entertainment. So think musical groups, comedians, conferences, seminars, a full update renovation to interior, exterior facade, updated seating, concessions. The business plan that I've seen has a diverse listing of programming for the community. So aside from your nightly entertainment for our young professionals and adults, also looking into daytime programming for our senior population, for veterans and families, additional offerings to our surrounding businesses and organizations to be able to use the venue for renting the space for their own annual meetings and conferences and so forth. So we see it as a super impactful project to our downtown. It fills a void that we have, entertainment. You're well aware of the leakage outside of our county, and also event space for businesses to be able to use. So we think it's a great project, and we hope that you support our application.
Okay, any questions?
I recall the $100 million survey that was all around this room, and you put a dot on it to see what you wanted with the growth of the city of Batavia. Patty remembers it because she keeps shaking her head. I don't know if anyone else...
I think it might have been the DRI or something along that lines.
Yeah. But anyways, it was on there. And the YMCA was the first one to get any money. And the dots on that board was for theater. So he would be able to renovate it and have different venues over here in the city of Batavia. And he never got it, never got a pen. And it goes with a lot of things. And the old saying, "It's not what you know, it's who you know, and that's how you get it." So that's my remarks. Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Nicklaus. One of the things that's, I think, coming to light here, and a lot of people are aware of it, but after COVID and everything, this has been a death of movie theaters. I mean, theaters all over the country are folding because the companies are going to livestream. They're making brand-new movies and livestreaming on the day they come out. And if we're not careful, we're going to be looking at another falls building in our downtown. So I think, you know, I'm all in favor of this. Anything to preserve what we have. I mean, today, recruiting new businesses is out of the question when we can't even keep what we have. So we should be really cautious and approach this and do the best we can. Thank you.
I would like to note that at this point, it's pretty much a pass-through type grant. I mean, we're just...
Not even that. The city is...
We're just endorsing it, and they're doing all the work.
That's correct.
All the matching grants, funding, and anything like that. And as a business owner, we, as council, one of our mission statement is to support business and entrepreneurship. And this gentleman is willing to take an investment and do the inside and outside with a little bit of grant help. If he qualifies, that's up to the state to make that decision or whoever. I think we should fully support it and then let him, you know, take his risks. And he's his own person, and he can handle it from there. So a letter of endorsement is the least we can do. So we're in consensus to move this to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
The, Mr. Nichols. Of course you are, and I got to move, don't I?
I'm sorry.
Are you flicking off my head?
I mean, especially your wife, you know, like... I think that then your wife would say, "Let's be jerking out of the way."
Hello, I'm Robbie Nichols. I'm the owner of Can USA Sports along with my wife, Nellie Nichols. Your all-handled binder that has these same notes if you want to follow in here or if you want to work, watch the projector. Before I begin, I want to thank Rachel Tobalski. I would not be here tonight without her professionalism and her communication skills to keep me informed along the way on this. Also, Mr. George Van Ness, working with my legal counsel to get us to this point. Thank you for their efforts. Who is Can USA Sports? It's a company that is owned by myself, Robbie Nichols, my wife, Nellie Nichols. It came about, I was a young kid playing hockey from Hamilton, Ontario, Canada, and my wife is from California, from LA, loving the Dodgers. The hockey and the baseball came together, and we got Can USA Sports. We've owned the Elmira Pioneers for approximately 10 years. That team plays in the PGCBF, the Perfect Game Collegiate Baseball League. Before that, it was a pro team, which started in 1888, and has rich history of baseball being in Elmira and really mirrors Batavia's baseball. The stadium there was built in 1932, so I can tell you, Dwyer Stadium is a great-looking stadium compared to historic Dunfield. Hopefully, they'll see this in Elmira. So the Pioneers are there. The Elmira Enforcers are a pro hockey team. They play in the Federal Pro Hockey League in Elmira. So those are how it came about for Can USA Sports. I'll just give you the thumb.
Yep.
It's okay. We always get electronic failures every time.
They know I'm not that high-tech, so that's why. This is Meet the Owners. Like I told you, I was born in Hamilton, Ontario, played major junior A hockey for the Kitchen Rangers, North Bay's technicals drafted by the Philadelphia Flyers to replace a guy by the name of Dave Schultz. Anybody that's a hockey fan. I went to Philadelphia. They sent me down to Hershey and the minors. Ended up playing two years in Kalamazoo, Michigan. After Kalamazoo, I signed with a team called the Detroit Red Wings. They sent me to Glen's Falls, New York. Spent two years winning at Calder Cup in Glen's Falls, New York, and then one year in Phoenix and five in San Diego. So had a 10-year professional hockey career. Went on to become a hockey coach for 10 years and a hockey GM for another 10 after that. Played with guys, you may have heard of Lindy Roth, Lynn Scott, Arnie Allen, Douglas Swin, and... Was assistant coach, assistant GM, a guy named Rick Dudley, Clint Lorchuck, so some Buffalo Sabres guys. Rick Stelling was a former roommate. My background is a huge hockey background. I ran a team in Elmira, New York, called the Elmira Jackals for six years. And then I went and bought the local baseball team because it was struggling. And that's where the Elmira Pioneers came in. And as I said, my wife, Nellie, being from California, and she's part of the business and works as hard as I do at making it successful. Our staff, our general manager of our teams, a gentleman by the name of Mark Witt, was three years with the Columbus Blue Jackets in the National Hockey League. And he was the general manager of the Bigington Pro Hockey Team in the American Hockey League for four years before he came to work for us. Elmira Pioneers in Dunfield. Like I said, we've been there for 10 years. Rich history in baseball. Not only do we use it as a baseball stadium, we have a charity game against the Wounded Warriors. We have a concert there every year, a couple concerts, Margaritaville. We have career fairs. Dunfield Classics play there, which is a Little League huge tournament in Maine. We do a hot soap dinner, high school baseball games, graduations, concerts. We use it more than a baseball stadium. We try to use it as much as possible. The attendance when we took over at historic Dunfield was approximately 700 a game. We moved our attendance to 3,000 a game. And the hockey team, we took our attendance over there from a team that was folded and that is not going to make ice anymore. We average over 3,000 nights at the hockey stadium. Our players, the level of play, our players are all V1, mostly all V1 players from great programs, Kentucky, Ole Miss, North Carolina, Indiana. These players are looking to get drafted to Major League Baseball. They come in incredible shape, young players now, so the age is 18 to 21, and they have to have college eligibility left to play in our program. Last year, the Elmira Pioneers, two years ago because of COVID, last time, we had a player drafted in the first round, signing up the Baltimore Orioles with a $2.8 million signing bonus. He didn't call me after that, but I was waiting for that call for him. Maybe he'll give us some back. So it's very good quality ball. Our fans really love it. The players really interact with the players and fans, and it's a great relationship, and people like it there. We come to town, 35 to 40 players will sign on the team. Usually, when they come here, they bring their parents to see them play a few times, and fans and family. Brings a lot of income to the city. Talks a little bit about First Arena, what we do there. We host the WWE, Harlem Globetrotters, pro bull riding, wine on ice, extreme ice racing, concerts, dances, graduations, pro basketball, women's pro hockey. Again, the arena too. We use it for everything we can. My favorite event of all time has to be, we do a Christmas for the last fortnight, and we feed, clothe, and take care of on Christmas Eve. We just finished having a great event at the arena. Per COVID, we made it work, and it's probably the best event that we do all the time. A little more, it just tells you about the attendance. Again, the attendance rose there, over 3,000 a night. Annual visitors to the rink, 150,000 to 170,000. My favorite slide in the community. If we are lucky to bring a baseball team here, our players will be everywhere in the community. That is of utmost importance. I was the International Hockey League Player of the Year, not for my playing skills, but for my community involvement. We've been, we're cost-repairments for over 20 years. And we love giving back to the community. We do food banks, Challenger Division baseball. Every game will have Little League teams on the field with us, running out for the national anthem, running to their positions. Salvation Army, some of the different things you see in the community. Been in contact with the Genesee County Baseball Club, Brian Harris. Fully support, saw our team coming here, come out with them all. And we're excited, and we look forward to working with them if we're successful, and they look forward to working with us. More community slides. If there's an event on in Batavia, or we want to know about it, or we will know about it, and we'll be there. A lot of fireworks shows that a lot of teams have. We raise school supplies for all the schools for children who couldn't get school supplies. Race for the cure, reading, we get to schools and do readings. Just a couple. Testimonials, one from the mayor of the city of Elmira. And one from our manager, Matt Birch. The manager there, Matt Birch, former pitcher for the Kansas City Royals. We're successful here. The manager we have in mind is a former sharpstop. Played in Major League Baseball. Did that by myself. Committing to Batavia. Community involvement, I think, is our first. We love going into the community as much as we can. And we really look forward to the weekends where we have Little League tournaments on the field, high school tournaments, any dance groups, anything we bring on to the field. Financial commitment. Making a big financial commitment to the stadium, taking care of the stadium, buy a franchise, all the different things you have to do to have a team in the PGCBF. Long-term partnership. I'm asking for five years, and that's so I can commit. I'm not going to be here a year and gone. I'm going to be here five years for success. Successful getting a lease here. We will be successful. Growth of youth sports. We're here to help all youth sports, just not baseball. Maybe a little hockey, too. Stimulate the local economy. When you have a baseball game and we're bringing 2,000 people a night down to the ballpark, brings a lot of money. Only people that come to the area, all the visitors, they have to get gas, they have to eat, they have to stay somewhere. So having a baseball team support any community. Quality of life for our fans to come onto the ballpark, enjoy each other. Create new jobs, letting young kids look for that summer money to find some jobs in the summer. Hire, hire staff, full-time staff that will be working at the stadium. And this is why we need your vote today. We have a lot of things. We're a little bit behind the eight ball right now compared to other teams in Elmira. All 40 players are already signed for this upcoming season. We have zero host families. All our host families are done in Elmira for this year. League scheduling needs to know if Batavia's on the schedule or not on the schedule. So we have to hire staff. We have to sign 40 players. We have to go into sponsorships. We have to crawl around the local community. If we're taking care of the ballpark, it's not our ballpark, it's the community's ballpark. We want it to be used by everybody. We need sponsors, we need season ticket holders. And we're running out of time. I was trying to do this in December. I guess I had a lot of issues and big issues you had to take care of before baseball. So I understand that, but I think it is, we need to move forward as quick as we can to be successful. If we wait, I don't think we'll be further behind. So I'm asking that you vote yes to the lease and keep baseball and the rich history of baseball here in Batavia. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Nichols, I love baseball, okay? I was stationed on higher and I was a coach for years. I have a problem one to three years with the dollar rental, okay? I live in a, our community and the taxpayers of this community is back in the really bad for something to pray at this corner. I was wondering, how much would admissions be for a game for somebody to come in to see their children play?
Great question. The tickets, the season ticket, I missed that on my slide, it's a family of horrible entertainment. So a season ticket will cost you $99, which equals $3.33 per game. And, sorry.
Will there be a cost to community groups, high school, et cetera? Or will that be free to them?
For a high school team to use the field, yes. They would have to pay a fee. I will look at the structure of whatever it was in the past. And don't get nearsighted on the dollar. A lot of people think of the dollar. There's energy bills that I'm going to have to pay. I got warned that turning those lights out of the stadium is very expensive. The field, the upkeep, the machinery, the employees. A dollar is the one, it's a dollar plus, 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 plus. We've all gone to those fancy weddings where the plus, plus, plus can add up. I would say that one, one dollar a year will get closer to $100,000 a year.
Well, if you're charged, and do you charge for children? The parents or is it $3 a flight rate?
That's the season ticket price.
That's the season ticket price. So if you didn't have a season ticket price, how much would it cost you?
We haven't laid that exactly out yet. Probably $5 and $10 usually is what is on other ballparks.
That's, that's pretty good. I mean, you'd be able to pay your electricity and anything else that you would have, believe me, at $5 a crack.
Now, there was another thing in this contract, and that would be the concerts. And they would be able to go till 12 o'clock at night. Our codes call for no more music after 11:00. Would you be satisfied with 11:00 instead of 12:00? I'm thinking of the neighbors that are there.
I think we have to review that.
Okay, that's fine. We'll review it. That'd be good.
Counsel, first question, it's still 11:00.
Pardon me?
It's still 11:00, yeah.
Okay, good.
I'd be okay with 11:00 then.
Yeah, good. Good, that's good. Now, George.
If there's specific questions on the lease ratio, I'd be happy to tackle those when we get to the actual agenda item. Do you have questions for Robbie relative to the operations?
No, I'm, I'm, thank you very much.
Not so much a question as a comment. You said you weren't to wear what the high school paid. Remember that we're a very small community. The high school, up until now, has paid $275 to play on the field. An additional $250 if the lights had to be turned on, because I know it's a fortune. My daughter used to be the assistant general manager. That would almost have to stay within that range. Our high school, as you know, New York State gives them less and less and less money. And that's a very important part to me is that the high schools and Notre Dame, which is our parochial school, can get in there and really be part of it without being charged outrageous prices.
I totally agree. Yep, I totally agree. It will definitely not exceed that or go to some crazy price. We want the field to be used every, as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
An outdoor hockey game would be pretty nice too.
I talked to my ex-roommate, Rick Seeling, so I can almost positively think we'll have a baseball game against the Sabres alumni. Or I am looking into the financials of what it would cost to have an outdoor hockey game there.
Bob? I really commend you taking on this project. Appreciate it. I have a bunch of questions, but I'll be directing them to our attorney. But my question to you is, how are you going to handle remote management? I mean, you live in Almyra. You're not going to be able to just run right up here every time there's a problem and all that.
I cut it down to about an hour and 35 today, so it's not that far. And the funniest thing is, everybody thinks I'm a team owner. At the end of the day, I'm a sales guy. I'm going to be there at every game. You'll find me probably every single game at the front. Cash register's selling the hot dog and I'm a hands-on owner. My wife thinks I'm crazy, but I will be, I'm hoping I'll be here every day. But we'll have a staff in place here, two that will be working at the stadium.
Okay, so we've had other issues at the stadium before. And the management was like, yeah, we'll take care of it. They didn't take care of things. As you know, I mean, remote management's always a difficult situation to be in, so.
I think the key to a good relationship, my wife and I have, is communication. And I think communication is important. I hope you all have my card with my cell number on it. If you have an issue, you can call me directly. I like to be hands-on. I'm not a fan of an absentee owner. An owner needs to be there regardless who you hire. It's your company, my money. I'm going to be there.
One other question also, with this package, we didn't receive a financial statement or business plan or any of that. And I'm concerned about anyone taking on anything this year after last year. And I read the article in the Star Gazette, and I know what you were up against in Almyra.
My, I think my attorney turned my financials over.
So, more than that, it's just, you know, if you have a basic business plan that we can relate to. But like I said, it's, it's going to be, I'm afraid we're in for another tough year. What's your feeling on that?
You're speaking to the guy that's been in the toughest year ever. I own a hockey team and I run a hockey arena that's been closed for 10 months. I own a baseball team and a baseball stadium that's been closed for 10 months. I owned, just recently sold it, a hemp store at a mall that was closed for six months. So in the last 10 months, I've lost over a million dollars personally. So we'll be okay. This is going to get fixed sooner or later. If worse comes to worse and we can't play baseball this year, we'll be fine. We'll be ready for the following season. So I'm here, that's why I'm saying five years, I'm not a one-and-done guy. The arena, I had the right to throw the keys back to the city. And COVID had hit and I still lived up to my promise and had to run it. So the last 10 months, I've spent bills that I could have just walked away from. But I'm not that guy. If I make a commitment, my word is my word. I'm an old-school guy, I know.
Yes, I see you don't have a home in Florida anymore. You have one in Elrich Park.
It is. It's been a tough year. My wife and I were, I'm 56 years old. We're planning on buying a retirement home in Florida. And that's probably on the back burner for a while now.
I can only wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you. It's been a tough 10 months.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. If we're fortunate enough to add you to our community as a member, I would also like to recognize you as one of the great mustaches in the city.
I probably believe that that family will own, it's all Lady McDonald's is why I have a big pushy mustache.
So any counsel discussion on the presentation we just saw in reference to the amendment or the lease agreement that's on the agenda? So we in consensus to move it forward to tonight's business meeting?
Can we ask questions with George?
It's all right. This is where we're discussing the, the resolution right now. So if you have questions, George?
George, a couple things. Why can't we just write a lease direct to this organization?
We have an existing operator of the league, of the facility through BRRC, which was set up to do that. And that's the existing lease which is in place with BRRC. So what we did is we went back and we looked at the existing lease and prepared an amended and restated lease between the city of Batavia and BRRC to continue that. It would have been two years. So we've added five years to that, which is the term that CANUSA is asking for. And then provided for a five-year sublease from BRRC to CANUSA for counsel's consideration.
Does BRRC even want to lease the stadium anymore?
Well, that's the entity that was created by the city many years ago when the renovations were put in place to be the operator. So they're, they're part of that structure.
Okay. And the other thing, would it be more advantageous to both parties to have a one-year initial lease with options? Where either party can exercise the option in case it doesn't pan out. COVID, I mean, right, I mean, today the governor said, well, call and make an appointment. You won't get a shot for three weeks, or three months anyway. So, you know, it's, we still have some tough times ahead, I'm afraid.
CANUSA and the Perfect Game Collegiate Baseball League Board and president asked for a longer-term commitment from the community. Because they, the league itself, through the board, has already taken steps to approve Batavia as a location to be added to the league and approve CANUSA as an operator of a club. So they typically would not do that on a one-year as-you-go basis. They're looking for a longer term, which was the five-year that CANUSA is looking for. There is a provision in there about suspension of performance in the event of natural disaster and pandemic. Obviously, with everybody in the world, we hope that's not the case. But there's an acknowledgement that should that suspension have to take place, that there's a provision for that, in which case, performance could potentially be pushed back another year. But it's been accounted for in the lease. And from our perspective, in terms of crafting the lease, with my real estate colleagues and I, we just felt that that structure was a better structure for the city's sake rather than have a one-year, one-year, one-year with options. That gives you framework, it gives the operators framework, it gives the Perfect Game League framework to understand that Batavia, if you choose to accept it and move forward, is going to have that platform to operate in so that the operator can set up, the arrangement team needs to set up with respect to vendors and support and sponsorships and so forth.
Okay, so would you agree then that at the end of this year, say, we have a lot of, we lose a lot of revenue due to COVID that Mr. Nichols at the end of the year could opt out if he wants to?
When you say lose revenue, in terms of what?
Well, because of financial losses, because of COVID. If we can't start off the year playing games and all that, there's no revenue coming in. It's all expenses on it for his part.
It would, performance would be suspended on the enforcement clause. He could ask for that to be the case and he could ask for that year that was suspended to be tacked on to the end. That's essentially how these matters are being dealt with in a variety of lease contexts because of what we're all dealing with.
Okay, so one other issue ahead, this is, we went through this several years ago with Vandetta Stadium with concerts, music at night and all that. We do have a nursing home pretty close to there. And, you know, a concert's a concert's a concert, but it depends what kind of concert it is and when your windows are shaking and everything else. And at Vandetta Stadium, the people on Main Street were complaining up to say about it. And we had to get to school and told them.
Nick and the Nice Guys were there?
Pardon?
When Nick and the Nice Guys used to come?
No, no, actually they were having, they were having walks for different things and playing very loud music and the kids were running the music and it was just.
How about we let the businessman decide when it happens and we'll address it on a daily basis? If that's the case and the police come down and say, hey, it's a little loud? I'm sure they'll accommodate it.
Example.
Are we going to what-if this until the cows come home?
We already have a loud place, Mr. President, and it does have a desk. I just want to make sure a lot of people don't realize it's a nursing home right here. There's a lot of residents, so.
Well, I think there'll be an element of operations that the operator should at least be extended, would be aware of and can communicate with the city department, heads and staff and police department on. This operator's going to have to operate within the fabric of what Batavia's laws, policies and procedure does.
Just like the last several have.
Unfortunately, the school didn't want to do this, so that was a problem.
Again, you know, this is, this is, I'm sure baseball is the main concern here. If an occasional concert has to be adjusted, that's only a very small part of what we're being asked for here. As far as the COVID, he specifically answered the question that he had that opportunity where he is now and he doesn't appear to be that kind of person. And in the meantime, we're not at any money except for the commerce that would occur by bringing in crowds by the lease in the first couple of years. It kind of provides for getting your feet wet with the COVID situation and getting him able to get his feet off the ground here. And that's his decision of how many staff he hires and what risks he takes. You know, I'm all for small government. Let's, let this thing go through and let the businessman do his own thing and we'll keep a close eye on it.
Mr. President, just a point of order too. This, this, really, this discussion should be in the discussion of passing the resolution.
Or, or do you? We can discuss it here or there. Usually if it's discussed extensively here, there's less discussion on the resolution. But either one will.
If you want to get hung up on discussion here, we'll be discussing.
Yeah, I think, but they're good questions. I think they're good little questions. But I think, you know, there comes a point when I've seen nothing but ultimate support from the community. I've seen a lot of positive things, people saying about it online and in person. I've had that one person say, we don't want baseball in Batavia. So I think since the due diligence has been done by our city manager and our lawyer and they are recommending this and they brought this to us, then I think it's a big opportunity. We should take this opportunity and let's see what goes. At least the first two years, we're not expecting anything anyway other than commerce and to see that stadium grow. So I think first two years, we can have a good idea of what's going on. And then if things happen due to COVID and for laws, then we can adjust that accordingly. It's in, even now, new contracts are going to say pandemic. This is the first one I've seen. And now we have pandemic and every contract will probably make going forward, so.
I think we might even have more baseball.
Right, Mr. Nichols, I just want to ensure that some businessman isn't locked into something with a stranglehold or the city can make and say, fine, we're still going to run it one more year.
Well, I for one would never vote for it to make a stranglehold at work. And I could, I would definitely vote to relieve pressure on somebody that gave it an honest try. So that's just something we can handle ourselves.
Well, and I would say discussions with the commissioner or president of the Perfect Game League who's also counsel and attorney and served on Mr. Nichols' behalf. He understands that, the league understands that, that that's a concern that we're all living through. If I might, district council's benefit as well. We did have over the course of time, a number of conversations with the Penn League president and counsel for the Penn League. There was a press release from the Penn League and it's, it's an unfortunate and difficult situation where the Penn League is essentially ceasing operations due to minor league and major league baseball's activities. But I can tell you that the discussions we had with the president of the Perfect Game Baseball League, Collegiate Baseball League, excuse me, were materially different in the sense that this is community baseball oriented from what we gleaned, from the sense, the demeanor, the approach. Nobody has a guarantee. We can't guarantee this is going to be a success. But it was a different approach and different mindset that we heard and I heard as counsel for the city. So my hope would be that if this is something you choose to move forward with, that collaborative arrangement rather than top-down, which is dictated by minor league baseball, a community-oriented focus, which is what this league seems to be focused on, is going to be a good fit for the city. So that's why we're at the city manager's office, Mr. Nichols and his counsel, to try to bring this to you to consider should you choose to do it. All right. Bobby, do you have any more questions?
In this lease, the amended and restated lease, will Penn League receive any money or lay on me from the Red Wings? Will they receive any money from us?
No, this is, this is going to be separate. This is, let me step back for a second. When we updated counsel in December, the sense was that the Penn League was going to consider an assignment of the existing sublease from itself, Batavia McDougal's Inc., to the CANUSA entity. That turned out to not be the situation. So as a matter of prudence, communicating with city manager's office, we prepared a brief notice of termination, which unfortunately just identified the fact that, that sublease warranted and represented that there was going to be Penn League baseball and a player development agreement. And that was clearly not the case. So as a matter of record keeping to clear the field, we issued the notice of termination to the city's manager's office. So the Penn League is, is from this standpoint, document-wise finished. This will be moving forward with BRRC to lease it to BRRC for another five years and then sublease it with the city's consent to CANUSA entity for a five-year term. Penn League's out of the picture.
Rachel, in our budget, we always put in $25,000 a year for the stadium. Are we still going to be putting in the budget?
I believe it'll depend on what's needed there in terms of capital improvement. There'll certainly be a collaborative approach, working with Mr. Nichols. If he, if you choose to have him operate, that we still would want to invest in some capital projects we have there. As it is our facility, we would still own the facility and we'd want to maintain it to a good standard. However, with. it to a good standard. However, with the lease terms, year four and five, Mr. Nichols and his organization are putting money in to go into our capital reserve fund to then make those needed improvements, so we may be able to lower our contributions at that time.
Counselperson Christian, if I might?
Sure.
One second. I think what you're referring to as well is a term in the sublease that required the city to contribute $25,000 per year in capital contributions.
Correct.
That has been removed.
It's been removed?
That's removed. That was a requirement of the Penn League and the Penn League's entities because they had to operate under the auspices of minor league baseball, with minor league baseball field and facility inspections on an annual basis. So that requirement is off. What the city manager alluded to, though, is continued capital planning that may exist under the city's existing capital plan and funding as she recommends to you and you deem appropriate to move forward with, working on the city's facility, which we own.
That makes me feel better.
Basically, we have control over any capital improvements and any money we put towards that. We're not required to do it based on the contract like we were before.
Yeah. Thank you, George.
Anyone else?
I think there's always going to be any capital improvements, so if it's rough on any...
Any building we have.
All days and things like that, so.
Yeah, but we'll have control over that on a need to, a need-by-need basis, not a mandatory contribution of every year, putting in some amount of dollars.
And we've also discussed going for potential grant money as and when they become available. I'm not sure how the city has been successful in the past on that, but that's something Mr. Nichols and I discuss moving forward with to see if there's an opportunity to bring in other dollars.
Maybe we have some people right here that can do that for us. If our application doesn't work, thank you.
Well, and like I said, like I said, this is, you know, this, we've been on a rollercoaster ride with the Penn League for a couple of years now, and it would be nice to bring some stability, and we have five years for, give them a shot at it. I'd say we move it forward and give them a chance, and let's see. We can improve it down there and our community, see what their response is. We'll know within the first year or two how it's going. We'll know right then. So are we in favor to move this forward to a vote?
Yes.
Okay, then let's move forward.
Can I ask one question before we resume? Do we have any updates on an accident involving the police car?
Yeah, we can certainly talk about that in executive session, as it does involve one of our members of our staff.
There's something public. I was asked the other day by a stitch on the body.
No, because there could be a claim, a pending claim associated with it, so we want to discuss it in an executive session.
There were no injuries, so, correct.
I would like to discuss that in an executive session.
Yeah, I totally agree. You know, this is, and it's probably, is the investigation even completed yet?
I would like to discuss that in executive session.
All right. We'll set that up either for another meeting, or we can do an executive session tonight if you'd like to, but don't we have to give prior notice?
We have executive session on the agenda tonight.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Okay. All right, we'll do it there. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Canelli, seconded by Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Felton, Governor Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Bykowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Fisino?
Yes.
Okay, I call to order the special business meeting. You've had the December 2020 minutes. Any questions or concerns or reference to those? So we approved the 2020, December 2020 minutes? Okay, those are approved. The 2020 financials were also part of your packet. Any questions or concerns about those?
Yes. I had one friend help me. Zach, he's an accountant, and I was kind of confused. At the top one, the general fund, revenues, revenues, and revenues. And there is the 100% over here on the right-hand side. What does that mean?
So on the first page of the financial statements, Councilwoman Christian, you're looking at general fund revenue, and underneath it says real property tax totals, 5.8 million. And it's always tracked at 100% because it is receivable to the city. So that's 100% collected of real property taxes.
The 5 million?
The 5.8 million, yes.
Okay. Now, down there, license and permits.
Yep.
It's in parentheses over there, 32,257.99. That's 146%. That's down?
That's up 46% because we've had more permits issued in this year for larger projects, including the Severino project.
Okay. The, that's it, actually.
Are you sure? I got more.
No, I got a whole bunch. I have to make sure.
I had my circles on there, Rosemary. Look, those...
Any other questions?
Good girl. No, thanks.
No other questions? So we approved the 2020 November financials. Okay, it's approved. Agenda items, the New York Main Street grant, the application, Resolution 1-220, Mr. Bykowski, and the voyeur Stadium lease subagreement, number two, Mr. Beely. City attorneys report?
Yes, council president, members of council. Since we spoke in December, obviously, we continue to work on a variety of matters, including contracts and other general matters for the city. One of the things I was going to point out, though, is we identified code enforcement matters as having some complications in 2020 because of the status of the court system. A new piece of legislation that the governor just signed also extended some deadlines for eviction proceedings as well, and it appears that same piece of legislation includes hardship restrictions and potential wrinkle as it relates to municipal foreclosures as well, such that evictions and foreclosures may be stayed until May of 2021 if there's a Covid-related hardship. So I just wanted to point that out, that obviously, we're all living through the Covid era, and we want it to come to an end sooner rather than later. But there are a variety of complications being pushed down on municipalities by Albany, which seems to be pushing out many of these deadlines further and further. So we're going to stay on top of that and see what we can do in conjunction with the city manager and city clerk as it relates to foreclosure.
Anything else?
Nope.
City managers report? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nichols? The city managers report?
Tonight's report will be the budget presentation, so we're going to lower the screen.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much, members of council, council presidents. Before I begin, I don't have as exciting presentation as Mr. Nichols, nor do I have the mustache. So, but on a serious note, I do want to present to you a summary of the 2021 budget. And before I begin, I do want to acknowledge all of the hard work of the department heads, the managers, the staff. They worked with me for countless hours reviewing, negotiating figures, and getting to the point where we can deliver this budget to you. I also want to recognize the union leaders who have met with myself and department heads on numerous occasions throughout the budget process, offering their ideas and suggestions. 2020 has been a difficult and unprecedented year for everyone. When we started the year, it was full of hope and good intentions. But before March, news came of Covid-19 spreading widely across the world, and we knew it was only a matter of time before it arrived in New York. Between lockdowns, executive orders, rules changing daily, health concerns, and the real loss of life, not to mention leadership changes here at the city, everyone here in this room should be commended for their strength and leadership to keep the city of Batavia government operating and responding to the needs of our community. To that end, the virus, lockdowns, economic downturn, and instability it has created, reduced revenues in our budget, services for residents, and this was very difficult to put together. I'm proud of the budget I present, that it's fiscally sound, and there were difficult decisions made with the assistance of department heads and staff members, but I can honestly say that none of us liked this budget. The restraints and restrictions forced upon us by reduced revenue and state aid will not allow the city to operate as business as usual. There are services that will need to be reduced or cut altogether if we are to achieve a budget within the tax cap, and that is what this budget you'll see tonight proposes to do. Tonight, I will offer you a high-level summary of the budget, including the revenue picture, major expense reductions. I anticipate that our budget work sessions to follow will be extremely detailed and filled with proactive conversations so the city can achieve the budget that meets the needs of the organization, the employees, and our residents. 2021 offers the hope and promise of moving past 2020 with a vaccine to Covid-19 and the end of the global pandemic. Speaking of national and state trends, federal and state relief has been targeted to individuals, businesses, and schools. Relief to local governments from historic revenue loss has not come. Within the latest stimulus bill that was passed, there is yet no aid to local governments. There is potential for local government funding relief with the new administration, but at this time, there are no guarantees, and it is not reflected in the fiscal 2122 budget. Covid changed everything, including the future of cities. And despite these difficult economic times, the city of Batavia continues to see investment in economic development in terms of construction and building improvements. There are many active developers looking at our city for market rate housing projects that will draw new small businesses downtown. 57 million has been invested to date since the city started the 100 million iMall land campaign. So city council are clearly on our way to achieving the $100 million goal of investment by 2022. The proposed city budget remains in compliance with the state of New York tax cap. The proposed tax rate increase is 1.38%. It changes the rate from $9.59 to $9.73 for $1,000 of taxable assessed value. The rate of $9.73 is still lower than rates we experienced in 2009 to 2013, when the city hit a rate of $10.71. At current assessed values, the general fund tax levy will increase by $85,000. As we've spoken at many of our meetings, there's a very difficult revenue condition. Losses in sales tax are AIM aid being decreased, what I'm projecting, by 20% by the governor's Office of Management budget. We are also not adding VOT funds into this budget this year. The general fund revenues and expenses, as you can see, will decrease, approximately $800,000 or 4.61%. Revenue reductions, coupled with increases in wages and retirement costs, created about a $1.2 million gap between revenue and expenditures as compared to last year when we started working in the budget. Therefore, the proposed budget reduces current levels of services to residents in many areas. They include parks and pavilion rentals, tree trimming, ordinance enforcement activities, community policing, special police detail, community events, economic development services, funding for the arts, as well as reduced staffing levels in police and fire departments. Restorations of these services will ultimately depend on the economic recovery of the nation as a whole, or reexamining priority services for the city. As you've heard in many budget presentations in the past, sales tax makes up 40% of our budget revenue and is the largest component and source of revenue. Sales tax is projected to decrease 2.7%. Real property tax, the second-largest source of revenue, is the most stable revenue the city has, but it's constricted by the 2% tax cap. This year, the tax cap allowed for an increase of real property taxes of an additional $95,000. So to maintain a compliance with the tax cap, we could only raise revenue $95,000 in this portion of our revenue. Revenue from state and federal sources, as you can see, is down. Additional revenue that we discuss typically during the budget is interest in earnings. It's budgeted at $40,000, pilots or fee-in lieu of taxes of $36,000, and fines and forfeitures at $85,000. These revenue projections are significantly lower than last year, and you'll see where it says 1.4 on the screen. That is showing you the AIM aid reduction. Again, the budget does not include VOT funds. However, we need to monitor the progress of the state budget in Albany and plan accordingly if VOT funds are released. In the city of Batavia, the growth of assessed value is not as high as the county or the town of Batavia. A major way of creating additional revenue is to improve the overall value of our commercial and residential properties. This chart shows our cumulative growth in property values since we began tracking it in 2013. Currently, 26% of the city's tax base remains tax exempt. That's $218 million of property that uses city services but does not contribute directly to our property taxes. Within the budget, you'll see for the general fund, the use of fund values and reserves. The proposed budget includes $300,000 on the line fund balance, which is a $40,000 increase over last year. This means we're starting planning for a loss of $300,000 in this budget. The budget relies on $275,000 from the water fund transferred to the general fund. This is an increase of $50,000 over last year. Fund values and water fund revenue cannot be relied upon long-term. The city must enact a plan to reduce dependence on these funds for the future. In this budget, you'll also see the use of retirement reserves. It's a one-time use of these funds to defer the cost of rising retirement expenses and relieve the pressure on the tax levy. Retirement costs increased 12% this year. By division, I wanted to show you the expense summary so you can see every single division is... This slide is about personnel expenses and shows fiscal year 1920 budgeted, fiscal year 1920 actual, fiscal year 2021, and the proposed fiscal year 2122. As I mentioned before, state retirement increased 12%. We have contractual obligations for bargaining units, including a raise for ASME of 2.5% in the budget, a raise for IAAF of 2.65% in the budget, and a raise for the PBA at 3%. Currently, CSJA, the administrative employee's contract expires on March 31, 2021, and negotiations will need to be started. A pay increase for non-union employees is not included in this budget. However, I recommend that the City Council recognize these employees with a one-time allocation of five personal days to be used in the 2021 calendar year. Non-union employees put forth extraordinary work effort during 2020 and shoulder added duties and responsibilities related to COVID-19 pandemic and leadership changes. Furthermore, to balance the budget, the following cost-saving measures have been made in relationship to personnel. The budget does include a layoff of an ordinance enforcement officer who was assigned to the police department and also to DPW. Also within the budget, not filling the current vacancies of the seasonal ordinance enforcement officer, a labor position, three firefighter positions, and the upcoming vacancy of one police officer. I'm also working with the police chief, management, and the PBA for proposed retirement incentive for a police officer as well. The youth budget also includes line items for contracting out services at this time, as the city has issued an RFP that is due back on January 15, so we'll know more during New to your budget book is a strategic plan that is...has similar goals that was set by council many years ago, I believe in 2017, but adds a little more color. I reformatted and updated the proposed strategic plan. It encompasses city priorities and assigns these actions with a timeframe and a priority ranking. The items in orange are completed and visually will be a good way to track progress over time. Even amid a serious financial crisis, it's important to continue to focus on strategic priorities and long-term goals for the city. The city runs a self-insured workers' compensation program. The workers' compensation saw a reduction of $69,000 in projected expenses from the prior year. We still have a goal of $1 million of reserve funding for the workers' compensation fund. We have stock loss insurance in place for large claims, and the total workers' compensation fund budget is $294,000 this year. The health insurance fund. The city also runs a self-insured employee healthcare program. Successful management of this plan has contained costs. Total health insurance fund budget for this year is $2.6 million. It's an increase of $118,000 or 7% over last year, which I believe is a lot lower than the increase of debruggecy in the private sector. The city's water fund has a budget of $5.1 million. The water fund, if they were to own, set a strategic water rate capital plan in 2015. The plan includes incremental rate adjustments and a modest capital improvement fee. So the impact of the increase this year to a typical residential customer is approximately $4.39 per quarter, or $17.56 increase annually for their water. The wastewater fund, total budget, $2.69 million. The wastewater fund also has a strategic sewer rate and capital plan that it continues to follow, adjust rates to be able to invest in infrastructure and save for capital projects. There is no char...no change in the sewer rate this year. The city center fund remains flat from last year, $206,000. City administration is responsible for operations and maintenance of the city center concourse. The user fee remains $2 for square foot. The city will finalize the Mall Bridge project in 2021 if the capital project is approved by council and plans to move forward with a city center DRI $1 million grant. So to recap, the proposed tax rate is $9.73 for $1,000 of taxable assessed value. That's an increase from $9.59 last year. The property tax rate increases 14 cents for $1,000 of taxable assessed value. On the average home, let's say $100,000, that's an increase of $13.23 per year. And when you look at the typical tax bill on that same home that's worth $100,000, your city tax bill would be $9.73, your county tax bill...I'm sorry, would be $973. Your county tax bill would be $999, and your school tax bill would be $2,282. Moving forward, the current conditions in the general fund are unsustainable. Future budgets will depend on the ability of the economy to recover, for us to recover lost AIM aid, for us to find sources of revenue. As you can see, the budgets as projected do not net to zero in the future. So we will need to do a lot of planning to make sure we're able to reduce our reliance on unassigned fund balance and the water fund while still providing the services that city residents require. Thank you very much.
Rachel, did you want to do questions, or do you want to wait for the budget process to run?
Wait.
I can wait, yeah.
Do you want to...does anyone have any questions now?
No.
I think whatever would be best served to wait for the budget process, and we have it in front of us, we can make changes very quick. Anything discussed now would have to be rerouted.
Exactly, we could wait.
So at this point, this is...
Might as well wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, read it and formulate any questions that you can bring down to the very first round.
So we do have, I think, finalized schedule. Lisa was going to pass it out tonight, our next...
I saw you were finalizing that today, so we should have a known meeting schedule set up when we get to that.
Yep. It'll be the 25th, right after the council meeting.
Right. I think our first one, I think the second one's February 1st.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any committee reports?
One tiny one. All committees are forbid our meeting and going on, but the exciting part is they are working on updating the Christmas decorations. I had a lot of questions on this here, the downtown area will be different next year.
Didn't someone bring up the old decorations that used to be downtown? Whatever they just wore out, or...
I think that's where they just got old enough that they weren't repairable anymore.
Right. So it's nice that they're going to be doing something different next year, so I hope they'll say...
I think so.
What was the decorations? The ones you're talking about now?
Yeah, the decorations for downtown. You don't compare that way. J.C.'s used to put them up.
The Lions Club.
Yeah. Lions Club, yeah.
They offer...
I don't think...
The Lions Club should be recommended.
Yeah, it's nice they decorate the community every year like that.
Yes.
Give them to the city after not being able to support.
Who did?
Lions Club and the Snowflakes. After a number of years, they ended up giving them to the city, when they could not support.
And then they just wore out, if they're left before.
Yeah, they're old. They're a lot older than that.
They're very old.
We all think, I think they go back there and do that again.
I remember when I was younger, so they gotta be like...
Yes.
They won't take old. I mean, there was before that.
There were prior Snowflakes.
I believe those go on the Lions also, and the city would go ahead and put those up. I would...that's a long time ago. Except I maybe only seen one or two seasons of them.
Right. Any other committee reports?
I have a memory of one. I was commissioned to marry my first couple a couple weeks ago.
Oh, that's right, you're the...
Congratulations. Oh, exciting.
It was very exciting, I enjoyed it.
Oh, congratulations to all.
I can't remember the name, but it was the young couple.
Here.
Hopefully, you did all the proper paperwork.
Okay. Long to remember that.
Any unfinished business?
Thank you.
New business. Resolution 1-2021. Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to submit a New York Main Street grant application.
Second by, Mr. McGinnis. Any concerns, questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Yes. Take us into executive session.
Here we go. Where is Article VII, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. And where is Article VII, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second by, Mr. Bayakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Yes. Take us into executive session.
Here we go. Where is Article VII, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. And where is Article VII, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second by, Mr. Bayakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Yes. Take us into executive session.
Here we go. Where is Article VII, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers' Law, permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second by, Mr. Bayakowski. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Costino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karas?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.